And good evening and welcome to the May 10th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you in the audience with us tonight, and we're glad to have those that are home that are watching us on TV. At this time, I'm going to ask you to stand as we have three lovely young ladies to lead us in our pledge. Elizabeth Thomas, the second grade student at Erma Segal, along with Sister Elise Thomas, who is a fourth grader, and then from Northfield, we have Annalise Lamb, and we're glad to have you ladies, followed by our moment of silence. And now our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, ever just as.
And now our moment of silence. Thank you. Board members, you have seen a copy of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, communications. Ms. Taylor?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, this is National Nurses Week, so I do want to start off by saying Happy Nurses Week to all of our school nurses. They have done an outstanding job over the last year, so we do want to celebrate them. Mitchell Nielsen Primary would also like to thank their community partners, First Baptist Church on Castle, for their generous donation of travel coffee mugs to their staff. Also, they'd like to thank Parks Realty for providing lunch to their staff during Teacher Appreciation Week. You're going to see this happening quite often through this conversation today. Reeves Rogers would like to say thank you to First Baptist on Castle Street for I'm a Story Changer tumblers for Teacher Appreciation Week, and for providing snacks during TCAP. Redstone Federal Credit Union also donated time and food for teacher appreciation and provided behavior rewards for their RTI2B program. Additionally, Reeves Rogers wants to thank Middleton C. Electric and St. Mark's for providing food and snacks during Teacher Appreciation Week. So we've had a lot of community partners. I could go on and on because all across our district, community partners came together last week to really recognize our teachers and say thank you to our teachers and provide them with great little snacks and goodies. So to all of those, we say a thank you. Congratulations to Hobgood Elementary teacher Ashley Barnes and Salem Elementary teacher Lori Chu on receiving the Mentor Teacher of Excellence Award from MTSU. This was announced last week, and that was a nice recognition for both of them. Congratulations to overall Creek teacher Anita Span on being selected to be a part of the 2022-23 Tennessee Educators of Color Fellowship. And Murfreesboro City Schools was awarded a $4,600 refuel grant to support its book bus program this summer through the Governor's Early Literacy Foundation, so we are looking forward to getting that, those dollars to work for us. Finally, today was a fabulous day outside at MTSU as we celebrated our Special Olympians. Students from seven schools came together, along with schools all across Rutherford County, and I have to say that our Olympians really held to the Special Olympics oath of let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave in my attempt. So congratulations to all of our schools and our special education department for pulling off a fabulous day. Those are my communications, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. I'm sorry. I didn't realize Special Olympics was today.
We missed you.
I know, and I missed being there. That's the first one I've missed in a long time. Well, I hope everybody did well.
They did. They did great.
Did Dr. Duke run with everybody?
Dr. Duke, well, you know, Dr. Duke's walk is most of our run, so he was greeted with lots of smiles. I will tell you that there was lots of hugs and high fives, and they did it very different this year, and it worked out wonderful. Not anything like I've seen before, but it was very, very, very nice. So I'm sorry you missed it. We actually look for you, Chair, because I was like, Mr. Campbell never misses Special Olympics. But they were great, and the kids were great, and the send offs, if y'all got to look at the Facebook and Twitter feeds from our schools, they were just amazing as far as their peers just cheering them on as they left on their buses, and they had to feel special, and honestly, it was a great day. Probably one of the best days Angela would do, yeah, it was one of the best days we've had in so long. Not too cold, not too hot.
Good, good. Well, I was busy. I volunteered at the hospital on Tuesday and drive the shuttle cart, so I was picking folk up and helping them out a little bit. I'm sorry I missed the Special Olympics.
All right. Well, I will tell you, Dr. Duke did step in and do, you know.
He did OK.
He did OK. He gets an A.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Spotlight on Education?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Tonight, we are so excited to spotlight Project Optimal. First of all, I want to thank you for approving these professional development funds through our ESER funds. Currently, we have about 40 teachers that are participating in Cohort One. Once you approve this, we reached out to our principals and had them recommend teachers that had been teaching between three and five years. We thought this would tie nicely with priority that we had on retaining teachers. We have completed five sessions of Project Optimal, all on Saturdays, mind you, so these teachers have really committed to this training, and we are looking forward to our week-long institute in mid-July. Tonight, Ms. Klisch and Ms. Paisley, a second grade teacher at Scales, are going to give you just a little bit of a glimpse of what this work looks like. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Klisch.
You know I'm excited to be here tonight. They love it when I come and present it, I can tell. Okay, so Project Optimal is, again, a passion project, and you know that. The unique part is it's a partnership with MTSU. So we are very fortunate. We have Dr. Jeremy Winters and Dr. Dovey Kimmens on our team, and they're the math content experts that really press those teachers. We also have Dr. Katie Schrodt on our team, and she's an ELA expert, because the idea is Optimal stands for Ongoing PD for Teachers in Math and Literacy. Tennessee has these math literacy standards that are often overlooked, so we're digging into those and really making that integration. What does writing look like in that math classroom? What does reading look like, speaking and listening? And I do want to pull this up and give you a glimpse into the project. So as we're thinking about this, thank you, we do have our three goals that we kind of committed to before we started. The first is, make no mistake, we want to deepen that math content, right? And these are teachers with three to five years' experience. We want to support them and really keep them with Murfreesboro City Schools. So that's our first goal. But then that second one is, how do we bring literacy into that classroom to make mathematically proficient students? And also looking at the math teaching practices and math student practices, because we do want effective teachers that produce positive results with our students. So when the teachers come on Saturday, the first thing that they see, or when they come this summer, is we meet as a whole group. And that is where MTSU takes the lead, and they press those teachers and really develop this content and go deep. And the teachers are, it's K5, like we're working on middle school math, and we're really going deep with it. But then after lunch, we go to breakout sessions, and we have master teachers at each grade level. So whatever key idea math content was pressed in the morning, they're saying, this is how it looks in your classroom. This is what you can do with your students. So we're really kind of thinking about big ideas and then putting it into practice, the theory into practice. So how Project Optimal supports teachers is they do give them professional development books. So we have almost an ongoing book study where we're digging into that. But we also give them literature for the classrooms. We don't really, well, we do give it to them. It's not we, but the project does. It feels like Oprah, you know, you get one, and you get one, and you get one. So we do provide them with grade level literature for their classrooms. So if it's supporting geometry, it may support the writing part of geometry, it may support the reading part, and we give them manipulatives. And again, everything is at their grade level designed to meet their needs, so they can take it. We do what we call a bridge to practice. So whatever they do in their grade level breakouts or in the main session, they take out, implement in their classrooms, and then they bring back the results. And that's really the fun part, is the beginning of the session when they share, well, this worked with my kids, and this worked with my kids, this one I got to do again, or refine, or how that looks. But I wanted to have Manny come up, because I always think you need to hear the teacher speak about it and what they're bringing out. So here's Manny from second grade, one of our participants. I could have picked a couple more over here, but I didn't know they were going to be here.
They're so many.
Go ahead, Manny.
So I have participated in the Project Optimal program, and I've loved it. I think we are able to really collaborate and talk to other teachers and bounce ideas off of each other, but most importantly, thinking outside of the box. We get to talk about so many things and have so many aha moments that we wouldn't have just being in the classroom on our own, and we love it. We get books, and our kids get to dive into literature, but we also get to learn strategies to help them be better mathematicians and be better readers. And so that truly has helped, because I feel like I've become a better teacher just in the five sessions, and it's totally worth giving up five Saturdays. And we have more Saturdays to give up, but it's totally worth it, because we get to work together and, you know, we get that extra literature, and we get to, you know, dive in and be more hands-on and make it fun again, because I feel like that's something that is so important. So thank y'all for approving that.
Thank you, ladies, very much. Appreciate that. Any questions? All right. Next item, the Best of MCS. Dr. Duke?
Good evening, Board, and thank you to Cindy and Ms. Paisley for talking about Project Optimal. It really is a pride of us for this year and the in-depth work these teachers have done. We are so proud of them. But tonight, I am here to recognize our Best of MCS recognition for this week, for this board meeting, and it actually goes really well with the Project Optimal overview that we just heard. Tonight, we are actually recognizing one of our community volunteers who serves the teachers and students of our district, not because she has to, but simply because she has a passion for teachers and a dedication to making sure the students of Murfreesboro City are well-prepared. So I'm going to ask Ms. Mary Lassiter to come on up for us. Mary taught math methods at MTSU as an adjunct professor for 15 years, so she has a relationship with many of the teachers in our district. She started working with MCS when she was a master teacher with Project Inspire about seven years ago. She would support teachers with planning and implementing lessons. This support could be modeling lessons or observing lessons and providing feedback. Six years ago, she began working with grade-level teams in various schools based on suggestions from administration and the instructional coaches. She would meet with teams and provide support on an upcoming unit. This could be activities, lessons, and best practices. Mary purchases books and materials for the teams to support their work. This year, she has been focused on working with third-grade teachers at Reeves Rogers and John Pittard, and the second-grade team at Mitchell Nelson. It is common for our teachers to reach out and ask for support with different math skills and concepts. Mary supports these requests with demonstration lessons, planning, and co-teaching. She also will contact teachers so she can go in and practice lessons in their classroom, which is also great. She has facilitated several professional development sessions for us in MCS. She is currently one of our Project Optimal master teachers specifically for second grade, and she has volunteered to serve on our upcoming math textbook adoption committee. Her passion for math is contagious, and we are so thankful for her dedication to the teachers and students of MCS. I had one principal email me, and they said, "Mary has a way of drawing teachers in and presenting math instruction in the most hands-on and applicable ways. Her approach opens a new lens by providing creative and engaging strategies and techniques that meet the needs of all of our students." I also had an instructional coach reach out to me, and she said, "Maria is always energetic, enthusiastic, and a joy to be around. She has volunteered countless hours in MCS to help build teachers' capacities, resulting in student growth. She is a true example of an outstanding educator, and we are so thankful that she is part of our district." Again, not because she's an employee, but just because she loves our teachers, she loves our students, and that countless hours she dedicates, we are truly a better district because of her. So we thank you for representing the Best of MCS.
Thank you so much. I appreciate this, and I love working with your teachers. They are so smart and enthusiastic and just full of energy. I've been meeting with them once or twice a month according to how we, as we come up on the new math units. And we plan with literature, we have all kinds of math manipulatives, and we talk about games and rich tasks that we can use to teach this unit of math, because our goal is for deep conceptual understanding. We don't want them to memorize or just rote-ly do something. We want them to understand. So then the teachers have the hard part. They've got to take it and go into their classrooms and make sure that their students can go concrete, pictorial, abstract, and do all of these things. And I am so proud of them, because they have really done it this year. And I thank you so much, and I appreciate being part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate you.
For sure.
Gifted Academy graduates.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I am honored tonight to introduce Dr. Heather Knox, who serves as one of our gifted specialists in the district. Dr. Knox and her fellow gifted specialists just completed this year, leading this year's Gifted Academy, so I'd like to invite Dr. Knox up to recognize those teachers who completed this outstanding accomplishment.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
On April the 23rd, we held this year's Gifted Academy graduation, where 18 Murfreesboro City School teachers and one Rutherford County teacher completed the 80 and 1/2 hours required to receive their gifted employment standard in the state of Tennessee. We would just like to take a few minutes to recognize their teachers, these teachers for their commitment to special professional growth and for taking the steps necessary to meet the needs of all of their learners. But first, Demi Webby, a second-grade teacher from Northfield Elementary and one of our recent graduates, would like to share a few words about how the Gifted Academy has influenced her teaching. Ms. Webby?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
As Heather said, my name is Demi Webby, and I'm a second-grade teacher at Northfield Elementary School. So as an educator, it's essential that we learn and grow in order to better serve our students in an equitable way. The Gifted Academy has helped me to do that. The Gifted Academy has helped me to see my students as children who are capable of deep thinking, children who need opportunities that challenge them at their level to allow them to grow, and also children who require social and emotional support throughout their educational journey. The program has better equipped me to serve all of my students in the classroom. It's helped me provide instruction and practice that's purposeful and intentional, that promotes deep thinking, and that gives the opportunity for them to be leaders in their learning and in the classroom. So through the generous support of the Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation and the tireless work of our gifted specialists, MCS has created a gifted program that sets us apart from other districts and will prepare our students to have opportunities and careers that will impact our community, our city, and beyond.
Thank you, Ms. Webby. Next, we would like to recognize our 2021-2022 Gifted Academy cohort graduates. Some of our graduates have been able to join us, so when I call your name, please stand. Michael Hebrin, Marina Dukes, Christina Barnes, Caitlin Campbell, Charlotte Young, Nicole Jones, Crystal Landis, Kristen Bowers, Megan Maithen, Jenny Beats, Amber Robinson, Catherine Tenet, Demi Webby, Michelle Grandy, Ally Thornton, Emma Arnett, Kayla Stevens, Kelsey Bond, and James Scannell from Rutherford County Schools. Congratulations to all of our graduates. The Murfreesboro City Schools Gifted Academy would not be possible without the continued support from the Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation. Since the inception of this partnership, the foundation has provided us with financial support and guidance to help make this program a reality. Their contributions have impacted so many teachers, students, and parents in our district, and we could not have done this and be more grateful without them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. And congratulations to those of you that participated and graduated. That's a big thing to do as well. All right, members of the board, do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
I heard Ms. Barton. Who else did I hear? Ms. Goff. Thank you, ladies.
How about that?
Ma'am?
I'll second it.
You'll second it, Ms. Goff. All right, good deal. Any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Okay. We are now ready.
Action items.
Action items. Board Policy 1.903. Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir. At the last board meeting, we recommended adopting TSBA Model Policy 1.903, governing charter school oversight, as a new policy. An amendment has been made on the second reading, adding language to allow the board to visit charter schools more than once a year, and we are recommending approval of this policy on second reading.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the policy on second reading?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. Richard, thank you. My mind's going blank in a second by [inaudible].
Ms. Goff.
Okay. Any question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Policy 5.106.
Policy 5.106 governs application and employment. Currently, our policy states that employees must have additional degrees added to their license by the State Department before they notify our district's HR office regarding any degree-related pay increase. This amendment removes this requirement and allows employees to immediately notify the district's HR office once the required coursework has been completed or degrees have been awarded. This change was prompted by a request from the Department of Education, and we recommend that this amendment be adopted as presented.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the adoption of 5.106?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Policy 6.205.
This is the second reading of Policy 6.205, which governs the assignment of students to schools and classes. On the first reading, amendments were made to consolidate all assignment and zoning policies into one policy. As presented on second reading, this policy incorporates the changes from the first reading with added language to clarify that if a student is on a zoned waiver and wishes to return to their regular zoned school, they may do so, and we recommend adopting this policy.
Do we have a motion to approve Policy 6.205?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. 6.413.
This is the second reading of Policy 6.413, which addresses the prevention and treatment of sports-related concussions. At the last meeting, an amendment was recommended to replace the reference to a specific course and replace it with a general reference to the Tennessee Department of Health's concussion training website. This amendment on second reading removes the specific link to the website, so the policy will not have to be amended if the department changes the URL, and we are recommending adoption of this policy as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, I'm sorry, any question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. ESP grant?
Yes, sir. We are very excited to announce that our extended school program has applied and been awarded a one-time grant from the Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $2,519,317. As with most federal grants, these funds are highly restrictive and must be spent on specific items or programs. One of these requirements includes that a portion of the award must be utilized to pay bonuses for full-time and part-time childcare workers in ESP. Paying these bonuses is a condition of the grant and will take about $321,000 of the little bit over $2.5 million grant. The amount of the required bonuses is set by the Department of HHS. It is a $2,000 bonus for full-time staff and a $1,000 bonus for part-time staff. In addition to the required bonus for ESP workers, funds will be used to make upgrades to several of our school playgrounds, purchase instructional materials and supplies for ESP, and be used to cover work or compensation, including benefits. The childcare stabilization terms require that funding is spent by September 30th of 2023. We are expecting those funds to arrive sometime in mid to late May, and as a requirement of the grant, we have to pay the bonuses out without stipulation within 30 days of receiving the funds. So that is why we're seeking your approval prior to the funds actually arriving. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, that's a massive grant.
That is, yes, exactly.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the grant?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Now, we have any questions or comments?
I have a question. Just, um, this is exciting.
It's very exciting.
What, do we, is this a, I know you said it's a one-time grant. Is this something we can reapply for in the future? Or it really is just a one-time?
It is actually a COVID-related grant.
Okay.
And so we were able to apply for it now. And Ms. Powers, do you want to add to any of that?
It is just a one.
Okay. Great.
That's a huge grant. That's great. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, approval of letters to charter school applicants.
Yes, sir. As the board is well aware, Rutherford County Schools is currently reviewing two charter school applications for possible authorization to open a new charter school in the fall of 2023. In addition to the two that are currently under review, the Tennessee Charter School Commission has already approved an application for Rutherford Collegiate Prep, and this was after the Rutherford County Board of Education denied their application. Throughout this process, it has become clear that the charter school organizations were not aware that Rutherford County contains two separate and distinct school systems. In two instances, the charter school organizations have had public interest meetings in areas that would overwhelmingly impact the students of Murfreesboro City Schools and not the students of Rutherford County who the application was applied with. Tennessee Code Annotated authorizes public charter schools to form and provide educational options for students residing within the jurisdiction of the authorizer. Tennessee law also states that charter schools must open and operate within the geographic boundaries of the authorizing local Board of Education. As a staff, we have examined several options on how to move forward to ensure that as charter schools seek to form in our school district, that they recognize the two-system district we have in place and the authority of the Murfreesboro City Schools Board. We looked at three options, and I'll kind of take a break to say, the first option is, Ms. Taylor and I talked about this, is that we could, in reality, do nothing and let the charter schools apply through Rutherford County, let the approval process go through them, and then if they happen to set up in Murfreesboro City, then they just happen to set up, and knowing it would impact our kids and our students. The second option we looked at is we could have waited until they actually find a location, and then if it's in Murfreesboro City, begin to challenge it at that point of whether or not they have the authority to do that. And the third option, which we felt like was really a proactive option, was to go ahead and alert to go ahead and alert the charter schools now. Um, again, these charter schools are, the organizations are coming from out of state, so they maybe don't understand, and it was clear they don't understand that there are two systems. So we feel like the proposed letters would be a proactive way of alerting the charter schools and the commission of where we stand as a board to say, if you would like to, um, put a charter school or open a charter school in Murfreesboro City, that this board would be the appropriate board to authorize that because of the jurisdiction we have. So the proposed letters state that because, uh, Rutherford Collegiate Prep, Springs Public School, and American Classical Academy Rutherford have filed a charter to operate a school with K six within, with the Rutherford County Board of Education as the authorizer, then they would not be authorized to select a school location within the jurisdictional boundaries of Murfreesboro City Schools. Again, it reiterates that Murfreesboro City Schools is the appropriate authorizer for portions of the charter school applications seeking to serve pre-K through six students within the city limits. Uh, should the board approve these letters, we would also copy the Tennessee Charter Commission on it, as well as the Rutherford County Board of Education. I do want to point out, it's really important to note that, to our knowledge, none of the proposed schools have selected a location yet. Our hope is that this letter will be viewed as a proactive measure that provides further guidance to the charter school organizations, and Ms. Taylor and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, look, do we have a motion to approve the charter school letters?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Goff?
Yes.
Yes, have a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Now, any comment or question, Ms. Moore?
Um, I think this is the right step that we need to do this. Um, I do just want to make a comment, though, that my understanding is that the purpose of a charter school is to respond to some sort of community need that the community has expressed, that families there feel that there's something they're not getting from their local public school systems, and the charter school says, "We can fill that void." The very fact that we have to send a letter to them to let them know what our local structure of our public schools is tells me that this is not a response to any sort of community outcry. This is not filling any sort of void that our families in Murfreesboro say that they have. And so I just, you know, it's clear this is coming from outside. These are groups that want to use our tax dollars to fix a system that they clearly don't even understand the basics of. And so I just want to point out the absurdity of this whole thing.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Barton?
I'm not sure I can add anything to that, Amanda. That was fabulous. But the only thing I would also like to say is that I think we have to be proactive as opposed to reactive with this. Look, go ahead and let them know on the front end how we feel.
All right, if, if, if a charter school applies with Rutherford County, and they're approved by Rutherford County, that means that they cannot set up their school inside the city limits of Murfreesboro, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Now, okay, if Murfreesboro City Schools approves a charter, does that mean that only students that go to Murfreesboro City Schools can attend that school or can a county student that lives inside the city that chose to go to a county school rather than a city school?
That sounds like a lawsuit.
Went through a lot of what-ifs, but I think she got it.
So what the law says is that, what the law says is that a charter school that's authorized by a local board of education can admit students from outside that local board of education, pursue it to the board of education that authorized it out of district enrollment policy. So if the authorizing LEA allowed for students from other counties to, um, attend, then the charter school could, the, the, um, out-of-district student could attend the charter school. Um, if a student was dual-zoned, where they had the choice to either go to a county school or a city school, I think that they would qualify to go to either or without having to go through the out-of-zone procedure.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Could the, yeah, I'm sorry, one more question. Could the, could they say on the out, I mean, on the, at the front, that they were only going to pursue county students even though they were inside city limits, and that be okay?
I don't think so. The law, the plain language of the law says they have to set up within the geographical boundaries of the authorizer. Um, so for pre-K through six in the city limits, it's Murfreesboro City Schools.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we've had a motion and a second to approve the letters. We've had discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Duke and Ms. Taylor, for putting this together.
Mm-hmm.
All right, reports and information?
Yes, I just have a few, um, updates for the boards, for the board tonight. Uh, first, and Ms. Triller referenced, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and I again want to echo her thank you to our community sponsors. Every time I was in school, there was another community sponsor I ran into providing lunch for our teachers, gifts for our teachers, and again, it just shows the, uh, I think that our community understands that this is their school system as well, and so I just want to echo that. We do have several end-of-the-year repairs and projects I just wanted to let the board know about. We are adding some sidewalks and ramps at both Northfield and Discovery to improve access to the building and playgrounds, so if you see some construction going on at those two buildings. As you may know, we put water bottle filling stations in every school with our COVID relief money and, or some of our grant money from that, and the last of those has now been installed. So all of our schools now have at least one water bottle filling station. And then later this month, also through our ELC grant, we received money to seal coat and stripe all of our parking lots, and we will start the first one later this month with Mitchell Nielsen. So as you're driving around the city, you may see some construction and some small projects going on, so, uh, thank you to Mr. Williford and his team for that. I will also let you know that, as you know, the board has approved our budget for next year. I'll be presenting our budget to the city council on May 19th during one of their first budget meetings at four o'clock in the afternoon, so I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. And finally, it is with great excitement that I am very thrilled to announce that today Black Fox Elementary, Salem Elementary, and Hobgood Elementary were all honored to receive the very distinct honor of being recognized as one of the new Tennessee STEM schools in the state of Tennessee. Um, and we are so proud of that. We are thrilled that three more of our schools have earned this recognition, and we want to congratulate those teachers and administrators who worked so hard to earn that. So that now means that eight of our 13 schools are STEM-designated. Um, I did some math today, and I do believe that makes us, the, it makes our district have the largest percentage of our schools in the state as STEM-designated. And I emailed some people this afternoon and reminding them that really STEM designation is about workforce development. STEM designation is about making sure we can show companies who want to relocate to Murfreesboro that we are preparing our students for the careers of the future, starting in kindergarten. So it's a great honor. There are only 88 schools across the state who have this designation, um, and again, ultimately, it really underscores that MCS is committed to ensure our kids are ready for the jobs of tomorrow. Now, as an added bonus, the three schools, Black Fox, Salem, and Hobgood, who earned the recognition today, we're surprised that they also are going to receive $30,000 each for their STEM program, so we're very excited about that. And then our five existing schools will receive $20,000 each for their STEM program. So today, because we have so many schools, today MCS brought in $190,000. So, uh, we're very excited about that, and we have great things ahead. So a huge shout-out to our curriculum instruction team who helped lead this, our principals of our STEM work, um, it's just really great things and we're really proud of them.
That is fantastic. Mercy.
Yes.
Who says we're not number one?
Nobody.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
And those are all my updates, Mr. Chair.
Is that including your director's update?
Yes, sir, that's all.
All right, well, that's a wonderful update.
Mm-hmm.
All right, do we have any other business coming for the board tonight? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second? You got a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Good night.